We are ready when you are, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So, welcome everybody for joining us tonight for the regular San Mateo City Council meeting for Monday evening, March 7th. Now I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you very much. So, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
And Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
And now, thank you very much, we're going to go on and read the health orders, the COVID health orders. So, due to the health orders in place currently, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain open until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So, the first item coming up is going to be, and I need to find this on the agenda here. Let me go back to, I think right here. One minute here. No, that's not it. Sorry about this. Not getting access to this right here. Let me try my other computer here. My apologies. After a number of delays here, we should be able to get going. So, this ceremonial item is the Women's History Month. And I'm going to read it right now. Okay, I'm not seeing it here.
Mr. Mayor, I just resent it to you.
Thank you, I see that. Open it up. Okay, thank you all very much for waiting. I apologize for the delay. In honor of Women's History Month 2022, whereas Women's History Month celebrates the contributions women have made to the United States and recognizes the achievements of women over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas, this year's theme, set by the National Women's History Alliance, is Providing Healing, Promoting Hope. In recognition of the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during the pandemic. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has greatly impacted sectors where women are the majority, such as education and healthcare. And as we acknowledge the social and economic impacts that have disproportionately affected women in these industries, we also recognize the triumphs achieved and challenges overcome thanks to their tireless efforts. And whereas, women across cultures serve in roles that are central to the advancement of society, and Women's History Month is a time to reaffirm our commitment to achieving gender equality, reflect on progress made towards resolving workforce disparities, and recognize that much remains to be done to improve the status of women and girls. And whereas, societies where women are given opportunities for equal participation are stronger. And in order to achieve peace, security, and full respect for human rights, women must never be denied a voice in political and economic arenas. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo hereby proclaims the month of March 2022 as Women's History Month. Signed by me, the Mayor of San Mateo, and today's date, March 7th, 2022. Thank you all very much.
I support the adoption as a woman.
Thank you very much. I'm sure many other women are supporting that right now. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Consent Calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number three, Remote Teleconference City Council and Commission Meetings Reauthorization. Item number four, Generator Purchase Contract. Item number five, Objective Design Standards for Multifamily Dwelling Amendment. Item number six, San Mateo County Vehicle Theft Task Force Memorandum of Understanding. Item number seven, Classification Updates Police Department. And item number eight, Classification Imposition Updates for the Police Department.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the Council who would like to pull one of these items for discussion? Please raise your hand if you do. I see none. So, I'm going to ask now if there's any member of the public who would like to pull one of these items for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
No hands. Okay. In that case, then we will look for a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Motion in second. Madam Clerk, would you please carry on the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. Next item on tonight's agenda is public comment for items which are not on tonight's agenda. Members of the public wishing to comment on any of these items or any item you may have, which is not on tonight's agenda, may address the Council at this time. State law prevents Council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have public commenters?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Elaine Deani.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, actually, it's her husband, Joe Coco. I couldn't tell from what was just passed whether or not you just took care of the entire ADU question?
I think the ADU question is going to be, I'm sorry if I may comment here right now, that'll be the next item after this public comment. It's item nine on tonight's agenda. So, if you wait, we'll be addressing that. There will be a separate time for you to make a public comment on that item during that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And anyone else, raise your hands if you'd like to comment on any items not on the agenda.
Okay, Madam Clerk, seeing none, I think we'll go ahead and close the public comment.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is an Ordinance Introduction for Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance Amendments. I believe we have a staff presentation from Mr. Zachary Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, Zachary Dahl, Deputy Director with the City's Community and Development Department. Let me go ahead and share my screen here. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Perfect. So, the item before you this evening is an updated ADU ordinance introduction. Go. This item, here's the overview timeline. You last considered this item at your February 22 meeting, and that resulted in a continuance with direction. The direction that you provided at that last meeting was to revise the ordinance to establish the height limit for attached ADUs to be 24 feet to plate line, 32 feet to roof peak. Detached, that height limit should be 16 feet to plate, 24 feet to peak. And include an option that allows for detached ADUs to increase their height limit when onsite parking is retained slash created, looking specifically at the concept of building a detached ADU over an existing garage, detached garage. And then the last clarification was that you did want to see it revised to allow for the final decision maker of an appeal of the alternative discretionary review process to be the City Council. So, before I move to how the ordinance has been updated to address this direction, I did want to provide a bit of background that helped guide that. I did provide this information last presentation. This provides an overview of the last five years of ADU permitting data. I did want to note, we've made two revisions to a number of issues permitted based on further review of our permit data in consultation with building staff. Those numbers have gotten larger, but overall, you can see the significant increase in permitting activity following, starting in the beginning of 2020. So, looking at that ADU permitting data since 2020, which was when the updated state laws went into effect, we've had a total of 174 ADU applications. And of those, 17 applications were for two-story ADUs. And focusing on this subset of ADU applications, as that has been one of the focuses of discussion on how the rules should be crafted. So, you can see, we've had 17 applications, three attached, 14 detached. So, a relatively small sample size, but we were able to extrapolate some findings based on that information that we pulled from our permitting system. So, looking specifically at these two-story ADUs of the three attached, they had a median plate height of a little over 18 feet, a median peak height of a little over 24 feet, and an average size of around 680 square feet. And two of the three were built over existing attached garages. The pool of two-story detached ADUs, we had a total of 14. The median plate height was 18.5 feet, with the majority, 12 of 14, having plate heights of 20 and a half feet or less. For the median peak height, it came in at 23.3 feet. And 12 of those 14 had peak heights of 24, a little over 24 and a half feet or less. And the detached units averaged approximately 806 square feet in size. And you can see the breakdown here. We had four that were constructed over existing detached garages. And an interesting takeaway was there was those four units were actually some of the lowest of our sample size of those 14 ADUs. Three were built over an existing garage, but they also expanded the first floor as part of that. So, the four were just purely built over the existing garage, no expansion of footprint. Three were built over existing garages, but they did add additional floor area at the ground floor level. And then, three included new detached garages. So, they didn't have one before, but as part of that ADU, there was a detached garage as part of that structure. Also wanted to provide a brief overview of neighboring city ADU standards for comparison. A more detailed spreadsheet was included with the Agenda Report, and I can pull that up if you have specific questions. For this comparison, I did want to just kind of focus on the range of detached height limits around our neighbors here in San Mateo County. As you can see, a large, a majority of them did focus on setting 16 or 17-foot height limits, and this is to peak for detached ADUs. And then it kind of worked its way up from there, depending on circumstances. And Redwood City was the tallest of the established height limit, defined height limits with 24 feet or 24 feet to peak of either a flat or pitched roof. And then three jurisdictions did have a variety that deferred to the underlying zone district. But we didn't have specific numbers to go along with those based on the survey that was conducted by 21 elements. So, with that information in mind, we did make some revisions, draft revisions to the ordinance for your consideration here this evening. We adjusted the final decision maker for an appeal of an alternative design review application to be the City Council. And we revised the height limit for attached ADUs to be 24 feet to plate, 32 feet to peak. And that aligns with the underlying height limit for a primary single-family dwelling in any of our single, in our R1 or R2 districts. For detached ADUs, the default height limit was set at 16 feet to peak plate, 24 feet to peak. And then detached ADUs, and this is where trying to look at the data, which was a small sample size, and given the range that was there, and the relatively small number of two-story ADU applications that we have seen, at least over the two years, slightly under 10% of the total applications submitted, we were proposing that detached ADUs that seek to exceed the height limit would be subject to that alternative discretionary review process with the caveat that they, that we would want to incentivize the preservation of the onsite parking in a garage. So, just providing a brief overview, the alternative discretionary review process has been in the draft since this originally came to Council in September, as this was highlighted as a process that would allow to, would be, would allow for addressing unique circumstances that wouldn't require a variance, such as topography, other site-specific conditions. And it is a process that could be used for an ADU that is interested in seeking a taller overall height. So, this is the basic process that would be entailed, and these are the findings that would need to be made. Looking more at the process particularly, in general, it would be modeled after our single-family dwelling design review, our SFDDR process. For this type of review and discussing this internally, we anticipate that a typical turnaround would probably be in the 60 to 90-day range. But obviously, this varies depending on how responsive an applicant is, depending on the issues raised. And the application fee would be the same as the SFDDR, which is set in our fee schedule. It is a $4,000 deposit, so it's a deposit. And any unused funds at the end of the process would be refunded. The CDD Director does have the authority, as stipulated in the fee schedule, to set a lower deposit amount, and that could very well be appropriate in this case. And we can do that if there is Council interest in setting that lower deposit amount. In looking at how an application could be streamlined, it could be incentivized to be streamlined, and that's touching on, what was outlined in the Agenda Report, of incentivizing a two-story ADU that preserves the parking in an existing garage. We looked, we outlined one process which focused on completing an action within four weeks of being deemed complete. Looking at that condensed review process, all steps would still be completed. We just do them in a more condensed manner. We would estimate an application could realize a saving of two to four weeks. One other opportunity, which would greatly increase the time savings, would be to allow for concurrent planning and building review. So, if this was incentive the Council was interested in, we would allow for a planning application and building application to be submitted at the same time. And an applicant could see a savings of 60 to 90 days in which they could get their building permit that much sooner. For the first year, we would recommend or that it be established as a community development department policy based on Council's direction. Then we would bring this back in 12 months for review. And at that point, consideration if the policy is working or if it needs adjustments. But if there's interest in going down this path and including it in the ordinance, I do have draft language that I can provide for the Council for your review. So, the recommendation before you this evening is to introduce an ordinance as drafted or as modified to amend San Mateo's Municipal Code, Chapter 27.19, Accessory Dwelling Unit and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units in Residential Zones, in accordance with changes to state law, and to amend San Mateo's Municipal Code by adding a definition for junior accessory dwelling unit. In addition, we would recommend that staff schedule a one-year review with City Council to review implementation, go over that additional permit data to identify if there's any further trends or issues or challenges. And then, based on that, determine if any updates or revisions are needed to the City's ordinance or the processing policy. And then, once the ordinance has been adopted, these are the next steps in getting the ordinance implemented. And then also, it does require a review and acceptance by HCD prior to going into effect. And then we would commence, once it goes into effect, commence in some community engagement to give the public an opportunity to learn more about the City's updated rules. So, with that, that does conclude my presentation. And as I noted, I do have some additional slides with alternative language, if desired, or would be happy to elaborate on any of the contents in further, depending on Council questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. So, I will come first to Council for questions. I see Deputy Mayor Pappan with the hand raised.
Thanks so much, Zach, appreciate it. So, I think what I had suggested last time was that it would be, any detached ADU would be 16 feet to the plate, 24 to the ridge. And then if there was an existing garage that somebody wanted to build over, we could go higher there, depending on whether they kept the parking or not. And the reason why I was suggesting that is because that was a structure that already existed next to a particular neighbor. So, I thought, oh, that seemed a little more reasonable at that point. But not to open it up that all ADUs could be subject to going higher than the 16 and the 24. Those detached ADUs would be left in place. It was just the detached that were going to be above an existing garage. So, I didn't, I think what you were proposing was any detached ADU could be going taller than 24 feet, right?
Yes, going through the alternative discretionary review process, and detached ADU could seek a height that's taller than that 16 and 24. And then that would be predicated on neighborhood notification. And it would allow planning staff the ability to work with the project to revise it to be more context-sensitive. But we didn't put any further parameters on it. And then we did add language that could, to incentivize keeping that existing parking by offering a streamlined review of the discretionary process, while keeping all of the steps intact, including neighborhood notification.
What did you say about the last part? You said with respect to a detached garage. What did you just say?
Sorry. With, if a detached ADU is proposed above an existing garage, and they are going, proposing to keep that existing parking, we would offer them that streamlined processing of the planning application.
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't quite what I was, what I was after when I was trying to propose a compromise last week. So, what I would suggest is that we keep the 16 and the 24 in any detached ADU, but if there is the existing structure over the garage that somebody wanted to go higher over, they could do that with the, the... You're suggesting no discretionary review, correct? Because they're leaving the parking, so then you get that streamlined process? Is that what you're saying?
It would still be subject to that discretionary review, so there would still be neighborhood notification. And it would still, there would still be the ability to change or adjust the design based on our findings and criteria.
Got it, okay, yeah. So, that's what I was kind of suggesting, not all ADUs, but rather just these ones over the garage. Because, as I said, the neighbor already is familiar with your structure, you know, sort of maybe abutting their properties. So, that's what I was proposing, Council. And that's what I would propose that we continue to stay with.
Thank you very much. Is there a response to that, Mr. Dahl, or should we move on?
Yes, I mean, we do have alternative draft language that we could bring before the Council, if that's the direction you want to go. So, I do have some backup slides with different iterations of how the height section could be drafted. So, I can pull that up if you'd like or when the time comes.
Why don't you pull it up now, so then we can see what we're talking about?
All right, so if you're able to see my screen, we basically would revise that subsection three, and then it would be listed as a height incentive. And then it would outline that it would be four ADUs that are built over existing detached garages that maintain that existing footprint.
Yeah, I think that's what I was proposing.
Diane, were you proposing 20 feet to the plate line or 24 feet to the plate line?
Well, if you did 24 feet, that would take it, that takes it to the 32, then? You're adding the eight feet on top of that?
Well, it could take it to. It depends, the roof doesn't have to be eight feet to the ridge above the plate line. Okay, there's discretion there in design.
Yeah, I think the 20 to the 28 for something over a garage in the existing footprint and the parking is maintained.
Okay.
Sure, Zach.
Okay, thank you for showing, is that, are those your questions now for now, Diane? Thank you very much. Next Councilmember, please. I see Joe, go ahead.
So, I appreciate this conversation. And Zach, I think you came very prepared with all the language that we might possibly need. I left the meeting last time confused and trying to figure out what we were trying to accomplish. I thought I understood, and I molded over, and I got several phone calls from residents. And these were residents who, I would say in general, are not, are not keen on the idea of a lot more ADUs. And they're concerned about the imposing nature of ADUs on their property and on their neighborhood. And in talking to those neighbors, we started from the baseline of this is what the state mandates. So, there are certain things that the state mandates, such as an existing structure on the, on the property line can be converted with no setback. Within a certain footprint, you can get the reduced, the reduced setback of four feet. And I was trying to, in my conversation with this resident, trying to figure out what are the things that could most positively impact neighbors to an ADU? It's onsite parking and it's setbacks. And if, if we have anything at all to provide as an incentive, it is, okay, we will only do additional height if you're going to give us increased setbacks and onsite parking. Zach, is my understanding correct so far?
That is correct.
We can't do anything other than that under state law. We can't restrict it more than that under state law. So, if we want to do anything positive for the neighbors of an ADU, I think the only two things we really can do are setbacks and additional parking onsite. And the only way to really incentivize that is, is to give them some additional height. And personally, the neighbors I was talking to who had these concerns, they said setbacks and onsite parking are much more important to me than a few more feet at the ridgeline. And since that's really the only thing we can negotiate in this process, and since, since I think that would have the biggest impact, I, my inclination would be to make it that simple. That under state law, you get what you get. If you want to go higher than that, you've got to provide onsite parking and setbacks. And I think that that, I think that that is the best thing that we can give the neighbors to an ADU. And so, that would be my, my thought process on a potential policy. But I, I get a little nervous with the discretionary review, Zach. I, so, you're saying that the ADU process under state law is not to... Discretionary review, they put in their plan and it gets approved, is that right?
Sorry, you broke up there with that last bit.
Sorry, Rick.
You broke up, Joe. Can you repeat that last part?
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Um, I think I was asking Zach a question that, under state law, if somebody who submits plans for an ADU that conforms to state law, gets automatically approved, right? There's no discretionary review there?
Yeah, it's, it's a ministerial process goes right to building, and if they meet our criteria, they get their permit.
My concern is that if there is an individual putting in for an ADU, and they have the option of being on the property line with an existing structure, or getting a little bit more height, and we get setbacks and, and onsite parking from that, I, I would want them to, to provide the setbacks and onsite parking. And, and I am concerned that the discretionary review process might be too many additional hoops to jump through, and we might not get the, the benefit that we're trying to, to seek here. So, and, and I only arrived at this from my conversations, multiple conversations with people who called me and were very concerned about the last meeting. So based on that, I would be leaning towards, okay, state law, obviously we can't mess with, but if you give us additional setbacks of eight feet and onsite parking, then you can have the additional height. That's, that's where I'm at right now. Um, and I appreciate all of your comments, Zach. I think you really facilitated this conversation extremely well. Thank you.
So I actually do have an alternative version that I think gets to the approach you're speaking of. And so the numbers can be adjusted. These are placeholder numbers. I can go into why I put them there, but they can be adjusted. But the basic gist of it is, so the provision number three would be phrased as a height incentive. And this basically is framed around the concept, I think what you were getting at, which is if you provide one of the following, or both, if depending on where, if this is where you want to go, you would automatically get extra height. And I put the twenty and twenty-eight, but that, also these two numbers could be wherever the council wants to be in, in our height range. So I think this draft language might get to what you're getting at, which allows for an additional height if you provide onsite parking and/or set additional setbacks without any discretionary review, it's just an automatic trigger. So is this kind of what you had in mind?
So my... Yes, but I, I don't, um, A and B, I, I think confuse me, and, and I'm fine with just, uh, let's see.
And this A and B could be simplified, I think, to get to your point, which is providing one onsite parking space and then specify.
So I, I think, I think what I was trying to say, um, was that additional off-street parking was being presented, so A would just say additional off-street parking, and B would say, um, yes, setbacks of at least five and 10. Is that the state law there, or is that?
State law is four-foot side, four-foot rear, five-foot, if you look at our, our zoning requirements for one story, and it does go back, and you are, the daylight plane is still present, um, most of our districts, with the exception of, I believe, the R1A, have a five-foot side yard setback, so it aligns the side yard with a main structure. And then the rear, it, it goes from 10 to 25. So I think the rear is your primary location for an ADU. And so I think this number could be wherever you want, but it was looking at some increase, maybe it's adding five to the four.
This is, Zach, this is great, thank you very much. I'm fine with B. I think with A, the, and this was one of the issues brought up by the person who called me on the phone, the existing detached garage could, could lead to too much height right on the property line. And so if I'm going to, if I'm going to allow additional height, I want the setback. And based on our conversation last time anyway, most of these garages don't support the structure anyway. It's not like you're leaving the structure there, you got to tear it down and build it back up again. So, uh, giving us an additional five feet is, is, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, it won't prevent the project from happening, is, I guess what I'm trying to say. We, we get the benefit, they get the ADU, um, and, and there's a setback. So those, those are my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Goltz. Which, I think we have Councilmember Rodriguez next.
Mr. Mayor, and I'll try to keep these two, two questions before, we're going to have public comment again?
Yes, we are.
Okay. The question I have on the different ordinances that you've proposed, Zach, if there is, I, I actually, in, in my neighborhood, there are quite a few homes that, that have a garage that's right along the, the, uh, the other, the adjoining property. Some are right in the corner. And I know that Councilmember Goltz was, was talking about, you know, the feasibility of just plopping an ADU on, on top of that garage. But I'd just like to know, under these various circumstances, what would be the highest somebody can go on top of their garage right now to kind of, that, that would be like basically right on the property line for all their neighbors to see in this particular, and this, and these particular ordinance alternatives you've had, you're, you're presenting?
So are you asking about when, and what circumstances it can be, the existing garage structure can be preserved, or just how high it could go?
How high it could be if it was exactly on the property line, or we could just say within the, the four-foot setback, or five-foot setback?
Let me, I've actually got a couple, I'll pull up those graphic exhibits here, and so I can walk through those. But with, with our daylight plane, you, at twelve feet, you would then need to start to pitch your roof. So for the second story, even if your garage is zero, at zero lot line, you would need to step in your second story to comply with the daylight plane. And I'll show you those graphics, just to walk through them real quickly. The, um, so you can see kind of here, this is an existing garage at the property line, both with a flat roof and a pitched roof scenario. In, in order to get a plate height of eight feet on your second story, assuming you've got an eight-foot ceiling garage, you'd have to build, build in a setback of approximately five feet to be within the daylight plane. And then there's different iterations of that, and then if you're doing a vertical wall. But to your point, basically, if you're, you have a zero lot line structure, you would not be able to build a two, a full second story against that side property line with the, while still also meeting the daylight plane.
Got it. And another question I have, so the, is my understanding that, you know, the state law is, is, is obviously trying to make it easier to, to build ADUs by, by reducing some of the, the red tape that's, that's been traditionally in front of people wanting to, to build these things. But on the other hand, they've given us discretion to determine what gets an automatic approval and what needs to go through the process. Under state law, what would, what would be the, the minimum we would have to, the minimum heights and requirements that we would have to approve without any, like, approve automatically?
And if we're looking at just purely heights, it would be sixteen feet to ridge is the minimum height limit that we must allow.
So anything, anything going over that is just the city council taking, taking the opportunity to, to kind of change our, our heart limit in response to, to that, that state law? But we don't have to do that if we didn't want to?
No, this is our local discretion at that point.
Got it, that's all the question sticks.
Thank you very much. Next council member? I see, uh, Emmeran Slate, and Joe and Eric have not lowered their hands yet.
Sorry.
Zach, I just had a clarifying question. Remind me again, what is the underlying zoning code, um, height at this point for R1s, um, which is currently in place?
Right now, for the main structure in the R1s, the underlying height is that twenty-four feet to plate, thirty-two feet to ridge. For accessory structures, which are permitted in the rear one-third of a lot, it's nine foot to plate and sixteen feet foot to max, to people.
So currently, um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that currently an ADU can, um, can defer to the underlying zoning code of the main structure, is that correct?
Um, between when the state law went into effect and currently, we have been deferring to the underlying height limit of any given zone district to ensure that we're meeting state law requirements, since we don't have an updated ordinance in effect.
Um, and then just another question, this is an opportunity to structure a policy that actually would theoretically, if we go in this direction, incentivize greater privacy through setbacks and, and preserve, or in, in some cases, potentially create parking? Is that, is that, I mean, is that the intent of the, the incentive, the incentivization structure, or the incentive structure?
That is the basic gist of it, yeah. You, you, I mean, you can start wherever you want to start, I've seen a number of jurisdictions, start with allowing the minimums and then allow up from there as an incentive based on whether it's additional setbacks or usually onsite parking. Those, those are the two primary pieces that, that usually get asked for as in exchange for an incentive, whether it's additional height or additional floor area or something else. But yeah, that would be the basic gist of it.
And, and just one last question, so one, um, you know, we've been talking about the ADU policy, um, and, um, and I think it, there's, you know, there's also significant changes with the passage of SB nine. And so it would be helpful just to kind of understand how these two new legislations can work in concert, because my understanding is that SB nine is actually a lot more permissive. And so, um, my, my thinking was that if we create incentivization, or it's, sorry, incentive programs that, um, that encourage onsite parking, that encourage designs that promote greater privacy and mitigations to neighbors, that, um, that that actually is sort of a way in some, some ways to kind of, um, curb the, um, the development or the potential development of SB nine, which is, um, which is much more lenient in terms of those, those considerations. So it, I mean, can you speak to that issue?
I, I don't know enough about SB nine to know how it overlays, or I do know that we have a certain amount of discretion with the number of units, um, once we adopt an SB nine compliant ordinance. Beyond that, I don't have enough information about SB nine to understand exactly how it would overlap with our ADU ordinance. But my understanding is anything in our ADU ordinance is provided, it's an objective standard, could in theory be provided, um, could be required of an ADU that's within an SB nine project. But I, I don't know enough specifics to speak more beyond that. But we can, we can speak to that further when we bring SB nine back before the council later this year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I think I see Deputy Mayor Papman.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions. So, uh, because I know Councilwoman Lees brought this up several times, it is currently up to two stories, that, but we have not taken any action since the setbacks got reduced, right?
We, um, we have been deferring to state law in terms of the standards we're applying.
Right, so we, we haven't done anything, though, to change height variations in R1 neighborhoods since the setbacks were reduced?
My understanding is that based on the, the direction, when this interim ordinance came before the council this past spring, we were defaulting to the underlying height limits of the district that an ADU was proposed.
Right, exactly, okay, because we haven't done anything yet. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that, um, the proposal that I made and the proposal Goltz, uh, Councilmember Goltz made, they're slightly different. And I just, I want to make sure that I understand them in my own mind before we go to public comment, one, or before mayor comments. One is that you could only have increased height over an existing footprint of a garage, and every other detached ADU would be sixteen or twenty-four. And then Councilmember Goltz is suggesting that any detached ADU would be sixteen or twenty, sixteen to the plate, twenty-four feet to the ridge, unless there was some different incentives that were provided, which would be a setback and onsite parking, right?
Yes, and I think the key difference, yours would still be subject to that discretionary review process that includes neighborhood notification. I believe what he was proposing would be an automatic incentive, if you provide those setbacks and onsite parking, you would automatically get additional height.
Right, and it's, it's up to us, as, as Councilwoman, Councilmember Rodriguez said, we could decide that we wanted to make that a part of the discretionary or not, because this is over and above the minimums that are required by the state. So I think you can't be discretionary when it's the minimums, but you could if you want to allow for more, then you can put that through perhaps some additional review, if it's more than the minimums mandated by the state.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that the different proposals, and I'll ponder them, but I want to make sure we knew what they were. Thank you.
Okay. Now, the council members, I think I have a couple of questions. And I think I already showed a chart, thank you for doing that. I had asked you earlier about costs for discretionary review and how long does it take, I appreciate that. I have another question, though, regarding the daylight plane regulations that are in place now in San Mateo. How long have those regulations been in place?
Um, it appears that they came, um, an ordinance in 1992 was initially established, the daylight plane, and then there was a subsequent amendment to the daylight plane in 2000.
And what was that amendment?
I, I did not have a chance to actually pull up the details, I was just looking at ordinances pertaining to daylight plane. But in talking to planning staff, it appears that our, our, some, some version of our current daylight plane was originally adopted in 92, and then there may have been some degree of modification to it in 2000.
Right, so before that, we had no requirements for daylight planes, which is why we have lots of houses that are built right up to the property lines and two stories, and, uh, some towering over the neighbor's one-story house and so forth right now, is that correct?
That's my understanding, I, I don't know if there was any type of daylight plane in effect before 92.
Right, so, so basically, when we're talking about the character of our neighborhoods, that is actually the historical character, I think, where properties were built two stories right up to the property line, or close to it, without regard to any sort of a daylight plane. I want to ask, um, another question. And that is... No, I think that was my only other question, um, for right now. I'll, I'll have some comments later, thank you very much. Okay, seeing that, then I guess we will go to the public comment period? Madam Clerk, do we have speakers?
If anyone in the attendees would like to comment, please raise your hand, and we will get that process started, thank you. I think this is Joe Coco again. Go ahead, please.
Okay, go ahead.
You're correct. At first, I'd like to thank you all for demonstrating that you're every bit as confused as I am. Folks, we have our single-family design, which was her directive, guidelines, whatever. It was to enhance the livability in San Mateo. I am very concerned with any comments regarding going up and above what the state is mandating, and doing so so that the public can't make any comments on plans, it's got to remain discretionary. I just heard a comment about the tradition of daylight planned planes and historic, historically there's been a lot of space between most places in San Mateo. And I can say that as a 60-year resident of the area and invite you to come to my neighborhood to see it. I think it is important that we make sure that we do have... I think it is important that we make sure that we do have additional housing, but not at the cost of the residents currently living here. And by that I mean a second story that blocks somebody's daylight plane, that causes them to increase their heating bills, that wrecks their views, that maybe impacts the quality of life. They should at least be able to point this out to the people who are going to decide whether or not to go through with the proposal of some change being made in the neighborhood. I thank you. Oh, one more thing. I sent in an email that came after a lot of consideration and I guarantee you is better worded than what I just said. And I asked you all to please read it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Martin Wiggins.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for all the time you're spending focusing on this, this issue. Uh, I admit to not totally following every bit of it, uh, all the while respectfully disagreeing with the previous caller. And I would invite you to my neighborhood of Hayward Park where I walk down the alleyways and see two-story buildings against the property line and, sorry, uh, the world did not end. Uh, I walked right on by. It was, it was just fine. But I wanted to make a general comment that I think we do need to allow more homes in San Mateo purely just looking at, um, what the Rena numbers are going to be. And so sometimes when I listen to this, it sounds like we're kind of trying to make it harder. I know probably trying to do that for good reasons and respect the neighbors. But if I understand that the existing process allows you to go up to whatever the underlying zoning is, and we're talking about capping it and then making it discretionary after that, and now I gotta pay four grand and wait ninety days. It kind of comes across like it's making it harder. And so I, I don't know that's maybe whatever. I don't think that's what people's intention is, but just as I listen and try to keep up, um, that's kind of what it seems. So I'm, you know, couching my comments because I might not fully understand the nitty gritty. But, um, thank you for listening and, um, thank you for your, your time on the matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Holm.
Good evening, council members. Um, I'd like to, like to follow the last commenter's, uh, comments about discretionary review and indicate and identify that it adds a significant amount of cost and time to the process. Not only do you have the cost of just the review, but doing that requires you to have an architect do a lot of linear schematic design work, um, to even get to the point of having the discussion. So you're looking at adding fifty thousand dollars to the cost total. Um, for the notion of having the proposed alternate language with additional setbacks, you effectively have your setbacks covered by your.
Eric, we can't hear you.
Plane, which is Mayor Benitez identified. For the residents that are opposed to ADUs.
Eric, sorry, you cut out and we missed about ten seconds worth.
Oh, um, I'm sorry. The, um, the, uh, the daylight plane limits your heights. And so having additional setbacks, um, is, um, is not actually needed because you've got your daylight plane, which as, um, Mayor Benitez identified is a relatively new construct in the hundred-year history of buildings in the city. Um, for the residents that are opposed to ADUs that are taller and are concerned about the impacts, I would encourage the council to think about it in, in reference to SB nine. And to think that SB nine is, um, far more permissive. It allows you to do, it's split an R one into four units, two, two primary R one units and two either an ADU or an ADU. So they'll be following the underlying height of twenty-four or thirty-two. So if you make the roadblocks for ADUs greater, you're going to drive more people to do more SB nine development. And like Councilmember, um, Rodriguez said last week, uh, or the last meeting about the unfortunate nature of SB nine taking away control from the city, uh, I agree. And, and the way to, the way to take back the control over SB nine is to make ADUs more permissive because you actually have already built in some, uh, some privacy controls such as your window, uh, obscuring windows and limiting balconies to discretionary review. All of that would not be allowed under the current SB nine because it becomes a, um, primary R one unit, which you would have to then implement that across all your R ones. So I strongly encourage you to think about it in terms of what SB nine does and gives this ADU guideline to be more permissive to actually control the growth to not be uh, as, as explosive as SB nine allows. Additional, um, comments with the setbacks for additional height. Um, if you follow the daylight plan, that gives you the ability or gives the person designing their ADU the ability to have a various height. It's not an all or nothing. It's not twenty-four feet or nothing. As we saw from the beginning of the report, several of the two stories were at twenty-point-five feet. So people would want different heights potentially. Um, the notion of having parking as a trade-off is a really good idea because as software than Saskatchewan Humboldt, parking is a significant problem. And lastly, you could look at additional heights or taller heights in R two zones. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening again, council. Um, I know that you've gotten a number of angry emails from folks who don't want to see ADUs in their backyards, um, are concerned about lost views, that sort of thing. I understand that. That's, you know, part of life. Um, but something that's seriously been challenged, um, I think really based on the report and survey discussed in the special meeting earlier tonight, is that, um, this idea that a few angry emails very often don't come anywhere close to painting an accurate view of how the city feels about something writ large. Um, I, I just want to remind folks that people who don't care about things don't write emails. Um, so just something to, to keep in mind. Um, second, and more importantly, actually, um, I, I feel like I've asked this before, but I want, I want to bring it up again because I don't think I ever got a, um, a sufficient answer. Right now someone could, and, and in fact, people have built two-story ADUs, uh, twenty-four feet to play thirty-two feet to the top of the roof in San Mateo. Those are the underlying height limits as they exist today. And what we're talking about is lowering those limits at sixteen feet. And so my question is, how would doing this not violate SB three thirty's anti-down zoning provisions? And I would remind folks that SB three thirty says as follows, notwithstanding any other law except as provided in subdivision one, with respect to land where housing isn't allowable use and affected county or city shall not enact a development policy standard or condition that would have any of the following effects. And the effects include, uh, changing the general planned land use designation, specific planned land use designation or zoning of a parcel or parcels of property to a less intensive use or reducing the intensity of land use within an existing general plan, et cetera. And for the purpose of that sub- paragraph, uh, less intensive use includes, but is not limited to reductions of height, density or floor area ratio. Uh, so my question is, how is this change not a less intensive use prohibited under SB three thirty? Thanks so much. Really appreciate the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Seema Patel.
Hi. Good evening again, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I want to note that I'm speaking on my own behalf as a private resident, um, but that I also happen to serve on the planning commission. I just wanted to, um, urge some caution in being too prescriptive with any rules. Um, other folks have talked about how the idea of neighborhood character can vary from neighborhood to neighborhood. And in my neighborhood in Central, um, similar to Hayward Park, we have, uh, many properties that have two-story ADUs built right up against the rear property line, which in our neighborhood, most rear property lines abut an alley, not another residential lot. And so while a ten-foot rear setback might make sense when two residential lots abut each other on the rear, it might not make sense in a neighborhood like Hayward Park or Central. And it would be unfortunate if, um, folks in our neighborhoods had to pay extra money or go through a longer period of review to be able to match the character of the rest of the neighborhood. So I would just urge some caution as we think about how, uh, quote unquote, one-size-fits-all rules may actually apply quite differently to different neighborhoods and their characters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Ryan Motashemi.
Um, good evening, council. Ryan Motashemi. Um, I just, I, I admit to have not having studied this issue in depth. Um, and I just wanted to, um, I guess echo sentiments around taking a more global picture at this, uh, um, at this issue. And when I say global, I mean zooming out and, um, thinking about how the ordinance would impact, for example, SB nine development. I thought that that was a compelling, um, argument that I was, um, that was presented in an earlier public comment. But also how it interacts with other state laws, which I think we all recognize and acknowledge, um, are, are changing and it's a shifting landscape that, um, is, um, hard to predict. But also there are existing state laws that we should, um, I, I'm sure staff is, is parsing through. And I would just encourage, uh, the due diligence to parse through, um, the, the applicability of various state laws, the ADU ordinance. Um, I think as someone who, um, uh, is interested in, um, living in an ADU and someday, I, I think that it would be certainly useful, um, uh, to have an ordinance that allows for, um, more housing, um, to be built and allow me to, to, to live, um, in an ADU at some point in time. Um, and I, I think that through, through your deliberations, we can certainly come to a consensus agreement on how to, uh, move forward with this ordinance, keeping in mind the various regional, um, and local factors at play. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Don Boge.
Yeah, and it's Linda Boge. Um, reminding you that the San Mateo Park Neighborhood Association has asked council to adapt ADU ordinance provisions for our R one A zoned area. I'm piggybacking here on the notion that one size does not fit all in this city. So I'm only speaking to one neighborhood's interests. We want to balance the interests in promoting development of new housing with the neighborhood's interests in preserving a historic area. That's a virtual arboretum. The association has asked that for the R one A zone, the state's allowances for height and mass be retained as maximums. That means sixteen feet across the board along with the daylight plane. ADUs also should be architecturally compatible with the main home. This request is in line with the size parameters the state deemed sufficient to stimulate new housing and consistent with what most other peninsula cities are adopting. Now, I think there, there are constructive ideas under discussion to allow twenty feet, not twenty-four tall ADUs to plate line. When those are combined with, when that height alleviation or extra height is allowed, combined with requirements that alleviate impacts on neighbors and on availability of on-street parking. And that may serve some interests in some areas very well. And I think it's really an improvement. These are better provisions, I think, but they don't work as well in San Mateo Park because they allow more height than generally wanted here at the environmental cost of paving over more green space in order to preserve on-street parking in a neighborhood that has abundant open curb space for parking. Incentivizing twenty-foot height ADUs even over existing non-conforming garages that hug property lines, which is a highly prevalent condition in this neighborhood, and we don't have alleys, um, puts ADUs in the part of a lot where they will be most intrusive on neighbors. So that, that should definitely not be an exception to a sixteen-foot height, particularly given that you're going to have to rebuild those structures anyway, as planning staff has mentioned. Adapting the park's R one A code, which applies to just one neighborhood with a cohesive character throughout, should not be problematic. Yes, under the new district election system, councillors who do not live in the park's district will have no direct electoral accountability to this neighborhood. So why should you care? On the other hand, council members who will represent other districts will be unaffected by this accommodation. Surely the principle that different areas of the city with different needs and wants should have direct representation on council was undertaken to strengthen the voice of neighborhoods. This council reconfiguration should make it civic routine to accommodate a reasonable neighborhood request such as this that has little to no import for others and is easily handled within the existing, in this case, R one A code. So the better question is, why not? I urge you to give the association's formal request your full consideration as well as a vote. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other speakers.
Thank you very much. In that case, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for final comments. And whose hand do I see first? I see Joe Golthos. Please go ahead, Joe.
Okay. I want to say thank you to all the speakers. Thank you to everybody who contributed to the conversation. Um, I do think that I want to get a response from our city attorney to the question of down zoning and SB three thirty. Uh, but I also feel like, um, the ordinance that I was commenting on earlier can be even more simple. Um, I heard from a number of speakers there that, um, the setbacks are not the issue, that the, that the parking is the issue in most neighborhoods. Um, and so it seems to me that the, uh, the additional height can be provided to those people willing to provide the parking onsite. Um, that is the clearest. I, I think it addresses in part, uh, the speaker, um, the last speaker that we just heard from. Um, and it also addresses the earlier speakers. Some neighborhoods need more parking. Some neighborhoods, um, need the setbacks and, and the, uh, side planes. So if the side planes work, then let's allow them to do their job. Uh, but I still think that in some neighborhoods, we want to see the additional parking and I, I don't hear any other ordinance providing an incentive to actually provide the parking onsite. I think that's essential.
Thank you very much for those comments, Joe. Next council member. Okay, then I'm going to go. Thank you very much. Uh, first, I want to offer some thoughts about what discretionary means. You don't automatically get approved after discretionary process. You pay money. It takes time. There's no guarantee of approval. Okay. The state authorizes, uh, ministerial approval with minimum heights allowed of sixteen feet to the plate minimum. Okay. If a builder, owner wants to build lower, that's their own discretion. They can do that. But if a owner wants to have a two-story, the closest thing they can get is sixteen feet to the height. That's the minimum the state allows. And twenty-four feet to the ridge, which it also doesn't have to be. People don't all like to have gable roofs. Uh, they could have a shed roof that has a low slope. Different kinds of roofs exist. Uh, there is room, I think, for some discussion, uh, with neighbors. And I agree that neighbors should be informed and there should be a discussion that goes on amongst neighbors. Because I know that without that, quite often we ended up with angry parties in the city hall, uh, saying that they can't take my view and all these other things. I want to avoid that if we can. But I just want to say that, you know, discretion is no guarantee of anything getting built. Okay. So a person could go through that whole process, then have to revert to what's allowed basically ministerial approval by the state, which is maybe not going to fit their needs. It might not get built. Somebody might sell their property. Somebody else could come later and say, okay, I'm using SB nine. I mean, that's a real thing. It could happen. Okay. I want to remind everybody about the survey we just learned about earlier tonight. The, uh, uh, community survey indicated that most people favor building more housing by two-thirds. Favor building more housing in San Mateo. And a large majority, we're hoping to see some more affordable housing too, which an ADU can be in the case where it's providing housing for people's children. Let's not forget that people have children and grandchildren. They want them to be able to come and live somewhere near them. But they might not be able to afford the market rates here. I think this is one of the things, that's why they used to call them granny units. Because granny couldn't afford the market rate. She came and lived in that house in the backyard where she could afford to live. And maybe she even got free rent. That's, that's up to the people that live there. So like I said, the sixteen to the plate, twenty-four to the ridge, state minimums that are must be allowed up to that amount. Okay. And beyond that, I feel that we're creating, and I liked a lot of the comments that Eric Holm had too. Um, I do think the idea of incentivizing people, you know, through, uh, to, to be able to get what they want by looking at offering parking onsite is, is a, a good idea, but I think we need to be aware, not everybody can do that. Not everybody has enough square footage. In my case, uh, in, as with many in Hayward Park, which is why they have on their alley. In my case, as with many in Hayward Park, which is why they have on their alley a two-story tall ADU, is because the lot is 40 feet wide and 100 feet long, and the house has already got a fairly deep setback in the front. There's not a lot of room. If I were to build a one-story back there to get a decent amount of square feet, enough for a one- or two-bedroom place, it would take up most of my yard, literally. So people still want to be able to have some yard. And I think neighbors probably like to see an ADU located far back on the lot, because they have their patio and their barbecue right outside their back door. If you locate the ADU far back on the lot, closer to the property line, you still let sunlight come through and strike on the area where the patio and the barbecue hits. All that said, I can't settle for making second-class dwellings out of a second unit if somebody wants to build 16 feet and 24 feet to the ridge. 16 feet basically though to the height, which is determining your living space within the dwelling, is not enough to account for different variables. I think people need to be able to have a crawl space underneath where the utilities can be located, a furnace, ducts, plumbing, electrical can be accessible there. If you build a house on a slab, most of those things come in through the slab, makes it really hard to service if you get a broken pipe in a slab, which happens. Okay? Water could shoot up out of a broken pipe in a slab, and then you have to call in somebody with a jackhammer to dig it up and fix it. So I have to say that, and while I think the incentivizing is good and smart, I have to fall back to the fact that most people support allowing the building of housing in San Mateo. And I just totally disagree with limiting the flexibility that people could otherwise have. And I think the discretionary review is maybe a good thing, but like I said, no guarantees. In fact, there are three or four findings, I think, that have to be met by the zoning administrator to be able to make that kind of approval. Is that correct, Mr. Dahl?
That is correct.
Then aren't they basically the same findings you make to approve any other dwelling?
They're modified to focus on objective standards and two other specific findings with regard to privacy and health and safety, so a version of, but not as wide-ranging as an SFTDR.
Privacy and health and safety, what are the health and safety concerns again?
It's a general finding that we have for any application, and it's to just, if there's an identified potential health and safety risk coming from a project, that could be a basis. It's not a finding used too frequently, but it's there for that option.
Right. So it's basically boilerplate. It comes with everything. And the other one was privacy, which, you know, you can add on to the back of your house with an attached ADU. And I don't believe there's any requirement there to have your windows obscured. They do need to be offset so they don't look into some other neighbor's windows, but basically they can see into the neighbor's backyard. So privacy is, it's a myth that's, you know, much cherished but really hard to find, given the fact that we live in a dense urban setting already, it's fairly dense. And people who have more space between their homes are lucky to have those kind of large lots. And I think that they would be unlikely to want to build up against the property line. And most garages of about 400 to maybe 460 square feet are not really big enough to, you have to build on that same footprint. When you have a garage against a property line and you want to build up, you have to build on that same exact footprint, which means you have to step back because of the daylight plane. And like I said, the daylight plane is a fairly new construct. Most people live just fine with having a building that was built pre-daylight plane. It doesn't really bother them, it doesn't affect them. The sun comes up, it moves across the sky, it goes down, you get light when you get it. Everybody lives with that. So I don't think I'm going to be able to support this right now, but I'm hearing, I'd be interested in hearing whatever other people have to say. Thank you. Yeah, please go ahead.
Do, does the city attorney want to say some words before I get started?
Just briefly, in response to, excuse me, councilmember Golds' comments and the speaker's comments about SB 330, I'll just say that in developing this ordinance, you know, we have been in touch with HCD that has authority over both the ADU law and SB 330, and we have not received any feedback from HCD where they expressed concerns over, you know, changing height limitations and changing height limits. You know, it's been a pretty common practice in developing ADU ordinances, so we feel confident in the ordinance as it's currently drafted.
So you feel that no feedback means that we're okay?
I feel that no feedback, to the contrary, that on that point, I think we should be okay under SB 330.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'll continue.
Thank you, councilmember Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, my thoughts on this issue have not changed much since the last meeting. I think the maximum height standards, which San Mateo and its surrounding cities like Burlingame and Foster City have had for decades, should be more than enough to create a very comfortable accessory dwelling unit. I appreciate the attempts by councilmember Papin to make a compromise, but for me, it just didn't go far enough. I think the new state law is sparking this discussion, but just because of this, just because of this new law that necessitates us to make a few relatively minor wording updates, that doesn't mean we have to increase the ADU heights that don't, that don't need a discretionary review. I think that, you know, a notification and a neighborhood discussion, when you can't do anything about it because there's no discretion or no discretionary review, is not really helpful. The state law gives cities a discretion to not have to automatically approve ADUs exceeding 16 feet for a reason, and I think that we should use that discretion. And that's just how I feel about this. I also just wanted to make a comment that I, that I, when we were discussing SB 9 way back when, when we were trying to determine whether or not we're going to take a position on it, I heard many arguments in support of SB 9 and why it was, why we needed it so much. But now I'm hearing that we should allow higher ADU heights to mitigate the impacts of SB 9. So that just doesn't make sense to me. Those are, those are my thoughts on this. So I can't support any of these ordinances.
Thank you very much. Councilman Deputy Mayor Papin, please go ahead.
So I think I've said probably every time this has come up, we are all in this together. And I think we all need to take into account that there are interests that have to be balanced here. And nobody is saying, well, gee, if I want a setback, that must be I'm anti-housing or I want somebody to live in substandard housing. I just don't think that's the case. I think part of this job that we have is to balance competing interests and find someplace that works for all of us. So councilmember Golds, you came out tonight with, seems like I'm hearing people want a setback and to preserve parking. As you know, while things were going on, you know, I was thinking about that because I really didn't want to have, for a detached ADU, to go beyond the 24 feet. I thought that was, you know, if you get a detached ADU, that as we all know, can be built four feet from the property line. Now, we're not back at the 10-foot setback we used to have. It's four feet now according to state law. I thought 24 feet is pretty tall. And when I look at what all the other cities have done on the peninsula, the vast majority have not gone much higher than 24 feet. And so I, I struggle with going beyond 24 feet. Okay, now that said, I made a proposal that, hey, if you've got an existing garage, your neighbor is used to that structure there. Again, we're all in this together. And so I thought, well, maybe that's an area where we could go perhaps higher, 20 to 28 feet. But if that's not going to sell to my colleagues, I think we should take into account then a setback in preserving parking and having it be subject to discretionary review. We have got to find some middle ground here, folks. We can't, this council, I think that's our job. I mean, I fundamentally believe that's our job. And so I think that that's an area where maybe we find the common ground then. If you want to go to that second story, remember, you're only four feet now from your neighbor's fence. Then you have to have a setback. Do the 10 feet on the second floor. I think it's a way of us all being in this together, still allowing a second story that I'm not even crazy about. But I'm willing to do that if somebody wants, you know, as Mayor Benia said, hey, maybe you'll take up less space and you'll have more green space if you allow that second story. Okay, let's do it with a 10-foot setback. Because I just don't think you should be pounding down at the four foot on the back on the detached ADU. I recognize we'll still have those structures that are real close, that are already an existing garage, and going to 28 feet is going to be, you know, pretty tight for them, and you'll have the 10-foot setback there. It's a little bit tighter quarters than maybe what they're used to on the side, but I'm willing to do that. So I'm trying to find middle ground because I think this council should recognize that we are all in this together, and we're really trying. We're trying to find more housing, we're trying to recognize that we're changing our neighborhoods. Let's do it in a way that we can all find common ground. So that's where I'm coming from on it.
Okay, thank you. Since we're having a discussion, you just mentioned something that brought to my mind something. Because where I live, and I know some other neighborhoods too, beyond my back fence is a 15-foot-wide alley. Do I need to have a 10-foot setback in the backyard if I have a 15-foot-wide alley there before my neighbor's fence? I mean, it's a point for consideration, right? We need some flexibility here.
If, 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 if I may just continue the conversation, so that, that would get to, I think you're right. When there is a certain situation where you don't have a backdoor neighbor, there needs to be some flexibilities, but I think then, then, then we're also, you're making a great argument why we can't, we don't, we shouldn't have a one-size-fits-all plan. And maybe that if you, maybe that if you are in R1A, which is a different circumstance than if you're in Hayward Park, there should be different, there should be different rules.
Right. I hear you. Okay? And I understand that in the statistics we saw earlier, I think 90% of the applications for ADUs were single-story and only 10% were two-story. So, I mean, we're spending a lot of time dealing with something that's far from the norm in terms of what's applied for. And I think that, you know, when we talk about flexibility, we should be able to find ways to allow people to do that. Some people have huge lots of plenty of room, right? Other people's property backs up to open space. Some might have a park behind, and I don't know what we want to think about that. But there are things we're still not considering here. And I think that the state measure actually, in my mind, provides, I think, pretty fair, you know, leeway, because it says minimum of 16 feet to the top of plate, maximum of eight, 24, I mean, yeah, 24 feet to the top of plate, which gives people discretion, right? They can apply for, maybe all we do is we say they have to have a, what's typical with a remodel in any neighborhood, which is a neighborhood meeting to share these things out with their neighbors.
Would that meeting be, is it the type of meeting where you just vent and then at the end of the day, you get it, you're approved no matter what? Or is it a discretionary where it's kind of like a little bit of a negotiation?
Mr. Dahl, could you talk about what that kind of a neighborhood meeting is? Because I think they're held when people want to add a second story to their house right now, aren't they?
Yes, for a neighborhood meeting, and that does lead to that discretionary decision at that point. So there would be the ability for neighbors to weigh in and affect the final design outcome.
And I think many people would be happy to have that opportunity to talk to their neighbors.
So, Rick, is that, is that an ordinance that you would support?
If we allowed for properties that have no neighbors behind them to build within, build, you know, doesn't have to be to the property line, but it's not a bad thing if you have no neighbors behind you, right? In my neighborhood, they're built right to the property line, and nobody, I mean, you walk down the alley, you walk your dog, you know, nobody has an issue with it, it's always been that way. In fact, I see places that those issues, those units have been there for probably 60 or 70 or 80 years. So that, along with if somebody wants to, if they have neighbors, and there might be an issue, allowing them the discretion of going through that process where they talk to their neighbors, the only thing I, it's like the state is saying you have to allow these, and then we're putting in place a process where they might not get it. That's the complaint that I have with them. So at which point, I guess they could revert to what the state allows, but I think it's, every family has different needs, and that's what I want to be respectful of. People have property rights, you know?
Rick, I'm trying to figure out what ordinance you would support.
I want one that allows permissiveness. I want one that says if an owner has a lot of a certain size, and they can only achieve the square feet that they need based on their needs by going to a 24 to the ridge, depending on topography and everything else. Topography gives you different height needs, especially if you want to have a crawl space, like I mentioned, which is a very common way to build houses, so that you have access, like I said, for ducts and water pipes and electric, electrical infrastructure. So I think 24 feet is not now the question, that's why so many houses are actually built that way. And this is indeed going to be a house. And the roof line, maybe we could lower the designation of what's allowed to the ridge, because that's going beyond what the state requires us to approve. So maybe they could have, instead of a 32 from their 24, maybe they could have a 30 or a 28, right? Foot to the ridge, if they have a gable roof or any other kind of a roof. The daylight plane, like I say, I feel is completely unnecessary because most of our houses, our town is built without it.
I second that motion. Zach, did you get all of that down?
I need to get a little bit focused on what we're looking to put in it, but I'm happy to start typing as we talk through it.
And also, I, with the mayor, I'd also like to know what, like, we're talking about these, these special cases, but what about for just everybody else that doesn't have an alley or a street or a park behind them? That's, that's the other part that...
Right, right. So the state already provides for four-foot setback side and rear, right?
And, and what height limit for them? With, for the discretionary part?
See, I believe the height needs to be our regular underlying zoning. Whatever the zoning is for that neighborhood, that's what it should be, that's what it has been, that's what's currently being built now. And like I say, only like 20% of the applications, which they don't all get approved, are for two stories.
So when you say current zoning, was it before we switched to the, the state default or after we switched to state default?
Zach, the underlying zoning in residential areas calls for 24 to the top plate, no more than 24 to the top plate, no more than 32 to the ridge.
But that's for the home.
Is that correct, Zach?
That is correct, but that's with the setbacks for a single-family dwelling, so you have larger side and rear yard setbacks.
Right. Yeah.
So, you know, we don't have that after the new law. We don't have those setbacks anymore.
That is correct. Now ADUs are subject just to the four-foot side and four-foot rear.
Right now. And right now, they can go to what's allowed in height and ridge height, plate height and ridge height under the existing underlying zoning, right?
That's because we never made any revision, like every city on the peninsula has done since this new law came into effect. And every, almost every city on the peninsula has then said, if you lose that setback, here's what the, here's how big an ADU you can build.
Right.
In other words, there is a change in circumstance, and that's why I, we keep coming back to it, well, this is what you can do now. It's only because we haven't acted. Every city on the peninsula has acted in light of a new law that reduced the setbacks. So that's what we are being tasked to do. So that's what we are being tasked to do today.
So a way of compromising on that might be if a person wants to go two stories within the established setback, they have to go to discretionary review. At which point they would probably get their second story cut back. And if they want to build it, that's what they'll do, right?
Well, it depends. If they, if they don't have any backdoor neighbors like, like you, probably it gets built.
And discretionary review would recognize that, I think. That's what we need to see that it does, right?
Right. I mean, that kind of accommodates the not one-size-fits-all.
Okay.
To allow that, you know. So what you're saying is 16 to 24, if you go higher than that, you got to get discretionary review.
Um, we're back to that. Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I, I mean, I think if that's the best we can do and get some additional housing built here, I think it's a shame because like I say, look at that survey. Okay, so a few people calling in and writing angry letters, you know, is not determinate of the general opinion across the city.
I can get behind that.
Yeah.
You got a lot of hints up, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, daydreaming. Yes, Mr. City Attorney, please.
Um, I'll just add the always, what you mentioned just now, Mr. Mayor, seems quite similar to the existing ordinance that's part of the agenda packet. Does that reflect, uh, do you believe that reflects what you, what you intend?
Yeah, except I want to allow by right, if you have no neighbor on the backside or no neighbor on one side or the other of your house, then you can then go up to the property line.
So if this, through, Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, so you're saying I could definitely understand in the back, but on the side, then you can put the ADU on that side to that property line if you don't have a neighbor or if you don't have a neighbor on the other side, you go there?
If it's open space there, for whatever reason, there's a creek, there's a hillside, whatever, there's no neighbor, you should be able to go to the property line there.
Makes sense to me.
And, and if you're on an alley, right, you should be able to go back to the alley.
I agree.
What if it's maybe worded as if you're, the setback, no additional setback is required when that property line is not adjacent to a residential use? Maybe that's the best way because then that would account for if it's a right-of-way or another use that's non-residential?
Yeah, I think that's, that's probably good. Simplifies that. Yeah, I think it covers it. That's fine by me.
I like that addition, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
And I, I also really appreciate the, the approach that Deputy Mayor Pepin was talking about with finding the middle ground. And, and I, I wanted to resurface the, the proposal that Councilmember Gothel's raised, which effectively helps incentivize the creation or preservation of parking and doing so by right through a streamlined process. And so I wonder if we're kind of getting closer to a resolution that incorporates the, the, the new language about, you know, the property building up to the property line if you're not abutting a residential property and all, and that that is by right and also by right increased height when you are preserving parking. So I think those two, I, I hear consensus around those two ideas and I, I hope that we can, or at least majority consensus, that we can move forward. Alternatively, if we don't move forward, the option is to approve the things that we necessarily have to, to bring our code into compliance and, you know, continue to refine and study so that we're not doing a one-size-fits-all. And maybe looking at different contextual, different, you know, distinctions between the R1 and maybe potentially being the R2 zoned areas. So, you know, I think that there could be two, two potential or three potential paths. One, we couple the, you know, these two places of, of alignment, I think that we've landed on. Two, we move forward, just, just updating the, the essential codes that we can all agree on to come into compliance and then study, you know, further study and assess how we can refine the, the policy around the different contextual and neighborhood characteristics.
Thank you for those comments. I think staff has already proposed that we come back in one year to reexamine. And regarding providing onsite parking, some people are using the space where that onsite parking was. For instance, I guess, you know, I hate to keep using my houses as an example. I can just say in my neighborhood, my next-door neighbors, right? They don't have a driveway that connects from the street to the back of their house. In the back of the house is the alley. And the back of the house is where you would be building the ADU. And that's completely allowable without providing any parking. And if the lot's only 40 feet wide and you have to leave 12 feet for a car and a four-foot setback on the other side, that's 16 feet, then you're only leaving 24 feet wide for a building to be on.
Right. So, so what you're seeing is additional height in those circumstances. And, and what I heard Councilmember Gothel was saying is additional height for, for the, the other circumstances where you are preserving parking. So that there would be two potential conditions. You don't have to meet both of them to get the additional height by right.
Zach, do you understand that?
I'm trying to understand how the height and the adjacency. So if you had a non-residential use on, say, your rear, but you did on your side, how would that be applied to the height limit?
So I think we're back to talking about two different kinds of situations, not that one. And, and well, could you explain it again, please?
Um, well, I was, I think what I heard you say, please jump in. What I heard you say, Mr. Mayor, was that, that it, you can buy, that where you want to get to is, is have maximized height where it's not impacting directly the residential neighbors, right? So in the case of an alley, that you can go up in height by right, right? Is that, is that, am I understanding correctly?
Actually, I'm not concerned with the daylight plane at all, but keep talking. I see, I see you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Okay. And then, and then this, the second, the second condition separate that I heard Councilmember Gothel speaking to was the, the intent and the goal of trying to preserve onsite parking and that, that if we create an incentive structure that will reward people with height for, for creation or preservation of onsite parking, that that is an also, another condition that, that can be met to, to achieve greater height. So those two, those two conditions don't need to be met on the same project, right?
What you just described, I think, gives on the one hand and takes away on the other hand. If you have room to provide other onsite parking, it's giving you additional height. If you don't have room to provide other onsite parking, you don't get additional height. Is that what you're saying?
On, well, I was, I was speaking to that you, right, if, if it's not a, um, so in the, I'm just, in the condition where we're talking about going up on the property line, right? In like in Hayward Park, on an alley, where, where you don't need to provide additional parking, but, but it's not, it's not a burden to the neighbor to go up, right? That you don't need to provide additional parking in that situation.
Right.
Am I, am I understanding your, your perspective correctly? Am I reflecting it correctly, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Do you have something you want to add right here, Councilmember?
I, I have something. I have a question for Councilmember Lee because I think we're getting closer.
Yes.
The question I have is, so I understand that for a neighborhood like North Central that's has huge impact to parking, I understand your, your logic for what you're proposing. But for a neighborhood like San Mateo Park, where we've gotten a number of emails, where parking's not an issue, that, that is where, that is where I think the discrepancy is. And that's where I think that the angst is from, from those other residents. So I'm wondering if there would be a way to designate certain like parking deficient areas or parking impacted areas of the city where what you were saying of the preservation of parking, where parking is the main, the main negative externality, I guess, of the, of the ADU. There, therefore, maybe that would be a condition where, where, what you're talking about works, but it doesn't work everywhere. So I'm wondering if there's any compromise there that can be worked out.
I, I'm, I'm open to that. I guess I'm, I just don't know how necessary it is because if you're not providing the onsite parking, then you automatically default to the 16 feet detached. So, so I, I guess I don't know what, what circumstance you're, you're trying to capture or address.
So I guess I'm trying to still understand what you're proposing then.
Councilmember Gothel is maybe give it a shot. This is my third attempt and I don't think it's landing.
You know, I have another idea. Maybe since there were only like, what, 18 out of 174 applications, I think, over the recent years for two-story additions, we, maybe we require the discretionary review, but we don't charge for it. Because we have this by right from the state saying you got to allow this somehow. Yet in the interest of letting San Mateans who own property be able to use their property in a way that fits the needs of their family, maybe, maybe we provide some allowance for them to do that without having the burden of paying a bunch of money that other people don't have to pay. And still no guarantees, right? They may end up having to revert to what's allowable, but they have a chance to go through a discretionary review and get it approved.
Through, through the mayor, I like, I like that idea. I, I just, I, I worry that I think this could work for the first couple of years. But if this is, if, if it's picking up like we hope it does, then it could become a burden. So I, I would think that that would be something else that we could start with initially and maybe that would even, you know, help, help incentivize more, more ADUs. But then after a certain period, after one or two years, we, we definitely have to take a look at that again to make sure that the city is not losing too much money on that.
Right. And the staff has built in a one-year review already, so.
I can get behind that.
Okay. Joe, how are you with that?
Zach, can you restate where we're at now?
Yes, let me, I'm going to pull up a slide for the language because I believe where we're at now is with the language in the ordinance as drafted. Here my screen.
And yeah, with a few revisions.
So the title's alternative code language, but basically after what the discussion and number three as drafted in the ordinance would remain. So, but then the, the policy provision with that is we would not charge a application fee when someone makes that planning application.
And what about where we have no neighbors? We have an alley. We have open space. What about that?
I think that would make the P, the review of the PA a lot easier because that's a, we could, we could highlight a specific finding as part of that, as an option to keep this language intact, but to allow for a more straightforward and predictable process if you're looking for additional height and you don't have a residential adjacency.
Okay. And so if we waive that fee, then they can go through the PA and they have a chance of getting that approved as a result of those conditions.
Zach, can you increase the, the font?
Sure.
And I also have a question about this when, whenever, the time, appropriate time, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, so this language, the, the issue I have with this is that what if the attached ADU starts to get into the setback area that, that's allowed because it's, it's an ADU, but it wouldn't be allowed if it was the home?
The attached ADU.
The attached, yeah. So that, that's the, that's the issue that, that I had with this originally is because you can, you can leverage the attachness of it into the setback that you would normally have if it was part of the home, but it wouldn't be because it's officially an ADU.
And so that might happen on a very small lot. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, exactly.
That would cause it to encroach?
Yeah. So is there any way we could put, like, well, we can't put a minimum setback for the ADUs, right? Because of state law? Is that?
State law, state law has set the minimums, yeah.
So that, that, that is exactly my, I, I don't think this would be an issue with, in, in, in big lot places, but like in Hayward Park and Aragon and almost anywhere with those law, those smaller lots, you could end up with, with a pretty big, a pretty big, a pretty tall ADU that's really encroaches on the back of the property.
They're already here. They're built that way.
You know, I, I think we're moving backwards because I thought that we had already discussed that and come to majority consensus that, that it makes sense to have attached ADUs be the same as the, as the, as the main structure because it would be, if they're attached, it would be just really architecturally incompatible to have, you know, different floors, you know, and different roof lines for an attached structure. So I'm, I, I, I thought that I heard in the last meeting, I, I recognize your concern, Councilmember Rodriguez, but I, I thought that we had sort of moved forward from that point. And that was in fact the staff recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation. I thought that the focus of this conversation was around the detached ADU height. So I just, I, I want, you know, before it turns into 1:30 in the morning again, I hope that we can kind of focus in the conversation where we're far apart and hope, trying to find some consensus.
So I just want to mention it's not unusual for the house to be built taller at the back than it is in the front. It's actually very common. I think that's what you would see with an ADU that needed to be two stories as it's added on to the back of the house, even though the front of the house is only one story. It's completely normal to go down the street and see the back of the house taller than the front.
Right. So, but in some cases then you could have a, for a small lot in Hayward Park, for example, you could have, you can have a, a a 24-foot plate line or 32-foot roof peak home going all the way back to four, four-foot setback?
No, because the daylight plane, like the, as, if I'm reading the, the drawings and specs correctly, the daylight plane is still applies and we haven't discussed removing the daylight plane. So in all of the renderings, anything that's above the, you know, the eight-foot, you, you saw had graduated step backs.
But it could still go to four feet though, right?
The first floor can go to four feet, which is the case. That's state law and that can't be changed. Anything additional would, you know, according to the renderings, were setback on, on that structure.
A step back on the second floor.
Step, step backs, yes, excuse me, a step back. So I think that your concern is actually addressed.
I believe the daylight plane covers what you're talking about here. Yeah.
So Rick, that, that slide that Zach just had up, which is the original proposal by staff.
I think he altered it while we were talking.
He did, but then he put it back. That's, that's where we're at. And the only way that I was going to change it was to try to incentivize onsite parking. If we're not going to try to incentivize onsite parking, then, then this is the language that we have and. I, I don't know. I, I don't know where we go from here. I think this is as close as we're going to get to a compromise right here.
I thought that there was broad support to incentivize onsite parking. So I don't know why we would stop short and not try to do that.
I think it's something we should then incentivize where possible, but not hold it against people that can't do that.
Right. That's kind of, it, it all sort of changed when we were given the option for everything that's a detached to become two stories. Well, that's where the change kind of came in.
And now that's discretionary. So.
And, and what about, um, what about garages that are at the property line and there is a neighbor behind? They would still be able to go up, but they would be subject to the daylight plane, but they could still go up to detach the 16 feet. And then anything above that would be discretionary review. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah. Unless your garage is like 30 feet wide, that's going to be hard to do because, uh, most garages aren't more, much more than 20. By the time you do a step back, you don't have much living space left up there.
Rick, are there any of these ordinances that you?
Hey, I'm just.
He's already there. Why do you keep?
I just.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just injecting some reality. I think I can live with what we got here. Okay?
Rick, I think that I, I thought that I heard you say that you also agree that you want to incentivize parking ministerially and, um, and that there's a way to do that, um, in, you know, and I, I felt like we were, we had already locked in that language. So I'm, I'm not sure why, why we're losing ground on, in, um, on the opportunity to incentivize parking, um.
I think because we were making it, like I said, we're making it now that every ADU has the potential that it could go up higher based on this discretionary review. I wasn't really there initially. Um, and so I am there now and that's where the, the discretion will be used, not whether you provide parking or not, because you're going to put things, you can now put things in the back that'll be much higher than we contemplated.
Right. But I think that the, um, the goal of making it a ministerial process in the case where onsite parking is provided, um, and that it's rewarded by additional height, that that's, that's a, that, that was what I understood to be the compromise and common ground.
Okay. Let me, let me change my position. Okay?
No, wait, hold on. I can answer. What I had suggested originally is if you have your garage and it's already next to your neighbor and it's that close and you rebuild in that footprint, then that was okay with me. But then we changed the, the format here and, and we said, okay, you can change any ADU that is on detached ADU. And as a result, I'm not necessarily so concerned with the parking anymore because everything is going to be subject to, or have the ability to go higher at this moment in time. Whether you provide the parking, keep the parking, not keep the parking, everything has a potential to go above 24 feet at this moment in time.
With discretionary review, yes.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. But I see that Joe and M O are still, Eric, how do you feel about that?
Um, I, I'm, I, I think I can get on board with what we have written right now. I think that's as close as, because we're going to get personally.
Okay. Well, it looks like we have three to two here. I wish we could do better than that, but. Um. Uh, uh, I mean, I can change my position, uh, and, uh, you know, I'm reconsidering the idea of incentivizing the parking. Uh, it'll go through a discretionary, a discretionary review anyway. Um, and I think a lot of details will get worked out there.
Wait, would it? Because?
It would go to a discretionary review most likely. Yeah. Because it's allowing higher heights.
But I thought.
True, Zachary?
Uh, but that's not what I heard Councilmember Lee. I might be hearing something.
That's not what I was saying. Um, but, um, I'm not sure. I guess we're further apart than I thought.
Can we take a Advil break?
One, um, if I may through the mayor, just add, it would still include the alternative discretionary review process, but we could add a finding that provides for, that, that provides instruction to the ZA basically that says, added, providing the required onsite parking shall be a consideration when approving additional height. It's still part of the discretionary review process that, but that's basically an instruction to the ZA to note, hey, this is, this is an important criteria. And if they're able to meet that, maybe that helps get the design across the finish line.
Right. I'm good with that.
Okay. And then we're also waiving the fee?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
First year at least.
I think.
There was a few after one year.
Yeah. That was a good idea, actually. And let's see where we are after a year.
Right.
Rick, if you were trying to get five, I think you got there. So hurry it.
Let's have a motion then.
Yeah.
Is that a motion, Joe?
I'll, I'll tell you what. I'll give you that motion and I'll give you two Advil. How about that?
I'll take it. I'll take it.
Who's going to give me the other two Advil?
Me.
Okay. Councilmember Lee, I saw your hand. Is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second for whatever that sausage is that we just.
Zach wrote it down. Zach's got, it's okay.
Yes, and I'm going to, um, call the roll call vote. I just wanted to let the attendees know who has their hand raised, that we had, um, already taken public testimony and we're not, um, intentionally ignoring you. It's just that that part of the meeting was done. Thank you. So Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldtholz?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Okay. We can move along on the agenda then to our final, oh, no. Now we go to a closed session and let me see if I can find my language for the closed session here. At this time, we're going to go to a closed session to discuss city manager compensation. We will be, um, doing that. Is there any public comment before that? Any public comment? Please raise your hand. If you have a public comment on the closed session to discuss city managers' compensation.
Uh, Mr. Callahan, do you have comment on the closed session?
Mr. Callahan, please. You must mute yourself.
I, I don't have a comment. There's not previous stuff. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Then we're going to turn to the closed session and we will be coming back, I believe, to report out.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, they're not done. They're coming back with a vote. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, Patrice?
Yes.
You may want to mute yourself.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Priscilla, are you on here?
Uh, yes, I am. I believe this is being recorded.
Okay. I was just going to say that that picture with you, um, with that green background looked great. It just looked a little bit too much like Redwood City.
Green background?
Uh, when you, when you turn your picture off?
Oh, yes. That's just my, this is, I'm not sure you're going with this. This, that was my office.
Okay. Are we all here? Adam Clerk, are we ready?
Okay, that's cool. Oh, everybody's here. We're ready.
I'm looking to see, oh, yes, uh, Deputy Mayor Pappan is on the line too. All right. Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think you need to read into the record the decision and the numbers.
Uh, uh, read the little ordinance then?
We have to move to adopt it in this open session, but he'll read what it is.
We have to take, we, okay.
Madam Clerk, are you suggesting I read the resolution and fill in the percentage?
Yeah.
We're considering 4% for Drew as a raise. We're going to take public comment, then we're going to vote on.
There we go. Thank you very much. Thank you for saying that, Mr. Former Mayor.
Okay. Is there any public comment on, on our intention of 4%?
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised. Okay. Then we close public comment. We'll bring it back and we'll take a vote.
I, I move to increase the city manager's salary by 4%.
Second?
Okay. A second.
Okay. Uh, Rodriguez for a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Goldtholz?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. And.
Drew, we love you very much. You knew that before, but we, we really do.
And just there's, there's one other blank. Let's just fill in. Let's do the math to apply 4% existing.
Okay. What do I? Let me see it here then. I'm going to do some math right now.